Good evening and welcome to the October 23, 2012, meeting of the Town Board of the Town of Austin. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make one announcement to our home audience. This is not live tonight. We had a illness with our cameraman and we have our replacement. Thank you Amanda for coming in at the last second, but we're live. We're not live on TV, but you'll see the whole board meeting, which we think is very, very important. Mary Ann, Councilman Tripodi?
Present.
Councilman Harder?
Present.
Councilman Blaha?
Present.
And Supervisor Johnley?
Present.
We have a public hearing this evening in the matter of the PACS financing to be added to the town tax bills. Is there anyone here who has come to address the board on this issue? Okay, not seeing anyone, may I have a motion to close this public hearing?
移到
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On to announcements. I'm sorry. Good evening and we just have a couple of things. We want to remind everyone that this Saturday is a very, very busy Saturday. That we are having our Harvest Festivals over on North State Road, North State Road and Chappaqua Road. There'll be lots of vendors, good times. Come and join us for our Harvest Festival out on North State Road. At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, there will be a parade from the high school down to Market Square in the Village of Austin. Austin High School was named the Intel Science School of the Year, the top honor in the United States, and we'll be having a parade to celebrate that. It is also, Marinol will be having their International Bazaar that day from 10 to 4. So it's always exciting if you've never been up to Marinol. They bring in crafts and handmade items from all over the world. So it's very, very exciting too. And I think that that's what I have. Does anybody else have any announcements for this week? It will move. Yes ma'am. Oh, so now we're gonna, before we move into our, before we move into our regular board resolutions, we'd like to take this opportunity in March or February, March timeframe. We hired our assessor Fernando Gonzalez and he joined us from Newburgh, New York. So one of the things that he was working on was his AIO? What is it? IAO. Should have written that down for me. Right. And so we would like him to come up front and I don't know.
He did.
He achieved, yes, he achieved that success. He was working on it and this summer he got it and we're very proud of him. So we're sorry, we're, come on up. I'm sorry, your name is? Edie McCarthy. Edie McCarthy is with us today from the assessor's group. So Edie, if you want to use that mic there, she's gonna make the presentation to Fernando because we're very proud that he got that.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce myself and thank you for availing me the opportunity to present this very prestigious New York State IAO designation to your newly appointed assessor Fernando Gonzalez. My name is Edie McCarthy and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees, the Institute of Assessing Officers in New York State. I'm also the assessor in the town of Greenberg. This IAO designation is awarded to an individual who is an officer of state or local government, a member of the New York State Assessors Association. Five years of full-time experience as an assessor has taken the appropriate coursework and must achieve a passing grade on a five-hour written examination. I took this exam almost 20 years ago. I know I don't look old enough, but, and if I can be so candid as to say, it's the hardest exam I have ever taken, including any work that I've done for my master's degree in real estate.
Wow.
Yep. Good or bad, there is about a 60% failure rate for first-time test takers. So needless to say, I'm proud that I've obtained and maintained this designation. Having said all of that, I'm very proud of Fernando for passing the exam the first time and also to thank you for your encouragement and support on his behalf. And on behalf of the Institute of Assessing Officers, I'm pleased to give you your certificate and your PIN and to welcome you. And you now have the initials IAO, Institute of Assessing Officers, after your name. Congratulations.
And Fernando, the board would like to give a good luck plant, frogs on it.
Yeah, I need it.
For good luck. So, and we know you don't necessarily need luck because you do, you're doing such an outstanding job for this community. And as in all of the people that we have here, it's all about the community and we thank you for your great open office policies and everything that you've done for Austin and Briar Cliff in the last year. Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comments on agenda items. Is there anyone who addressed any of the agenda items? Not seeing any? Onto the adoption of the resolution. The town board of the Town of Austin hereby approves the October 9, 2012 minutes of the regular meeting presented. There are motion?
移到
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The town board of the Town of Austin hereby approves the October 16, 2012 minutes of the special meeting as presented. Motion?
移到
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The town board of the Town of Austin hereby approves the voucher detail report dated October 23, 2012 in the amount of $319,643.88.
移到
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Debtance of Sparta Cemetery, where its title to the historic Sparta Cemetery located entirely in the boundaries of the Town of Austin currently held by the Austin Historical Society, a not-for-profit organization, and where the Sparta Cemetery is not currently an active cemetery capable of adding additional grave sites, but it is a cemetery of historic importance that requires regular and routine maintenance, and where no viable corporate body trust vondor endowment exists maintaining the Sparta Cemetery. The Austin Historical Society is not financially capable of providing for the required regular and routine maintenance upkeep of the cemetery, and where the Sparta Cemetery is or will attain the status and in cemetery by reason of the lack of means by required and routine maintenance to the cemetery and upkeep of its grounds, and where pursuant to Article 17 of the Town Law, state of New York, the Town of Austin will be deemed the owner of this Sparta Cemetery by reason of the lack of any means to provide routine and regular upkeep and maintenance to the cemetery at the present time and in the future. And where the town wishes to formalize the transfer of title, Sparta Cemetery from the Austin Historical Society, the Austin Historical Society has or will take the necessary steps, transfer title to the Sparta Cemetery Town of Austin. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Austin in accordance with provisions of Article 17 of the Town Law hereby accepts conveyance of the Sparta Cemetery from the Austin Historical Society in order for the town to provide the necessary maintenance and upkeep of the cemetery grounds as required pursuant to Article 17 of this New York State Town Law. Town supervisor is authorized to execute on behalf of the town any required conveyance documents as approved by the town attorney in accordance to effectuate the conveyance to the town Sparta Cemetery. Do I have a motion?
移到
Okay, we have a couple of comments and a couple of questions on this. Go ahead.
Madam Supervisor, thank you. I just wanted to ask if the Austin Historic Society desires this transfer or conveyance? Didn't know if maybe Town Council could?
Sure.
Address that.
I can answer that question. I have been in constant or regular communication with the attorney for the Historic Society and I have been advised that the Historic Society has in fact already taken the steps. The board has met and has already adopted and passed the required resolutions in order to effectuate the transfer. Council for the cemetery has advised me that is confident that the society now legally capable and empowered to effectuate the transfer.
Any other comments or?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, I'd like to make a comment on the resolution. Thank you. It just actually occurred to me during the reading of the resolution that in 2008, as a 22-year-old college graduate campaigning for the town board at a scarcely attended fundraiser at a local diner with a few people, one of which was a little well-known at the time, Rob Astorino, who's not obviously county executive yet. I brought up this issue and I brought up the issue of weeds and grass overgrowing on the sites and gravestones of Austin's founding families, revolutionary Civil War veterans, War of 1812 veterans. And it just occurred to me, like I said while reading this, that this is something that back then I thought was something we should do. And you know, now tonight, we're voting to take care of the cemetery that over the years, I had an Eagle Scout do a project there to maintain the stone wall and a number of other things. And I think it's a really good step. Obviously, my feelings are well-known on the Dale Cemetery issue and I think it's totally different to this. This is something that the cemetery law, I believe, was meant to deal with. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, we will now be taking care of a cemetery that was really not being taken care of in the first place. It's something that the families and the veterans deserve that are buried there. The fact that no more burials will be, you know, will be taking place there is somewhat comforting to me from a financial perspective. But again, on the larger picture, this is something, as you have mentioned yourself, Madam Supervisor, it's the gateway to Austin, to one of the most historical parts of our community. And it's something again that I've been focused on since I've been involved in local government here in Austin where I grew up. So I will support this resolution and will vote in favor of it. And I think this is again, is a step forward for taking care of something that was really not taken care of in the past couple of years.
I just want to remind everybody that this, I think, is a very important step for the history of Austin. As you all know, we do have, we do have a Dale Cemetery that we also, the Austin, Town of Austin is responsible for, but it is financially independent of the town at this point. And this, the maintenance and, the maintenance of this cemetery will join that group. We're also starting a not-for-profit group, which will be called the Friends of the Historical Austin Cemeteries, which will help us to do special projects that we cannot fund either through that, either through the Self-Sustained Cemetery Company or through the town due to restricted funds. We want to make sure that we have a perpetual care fund so that we can maintain the cemeteries for a very long time. As you all know, Dale Cemetery is a very, is an active cemetery. It's, it has some, we've had the occasion to have some bulk sales in there and so it has, it has really turned around in the last couple of years because there was a concern of Dale Cemetery maybe about three years ago. So it is with great pride that we, we take this, we take this vote tonight and we take responsibility for Sparta Cemetery and we can then alert the cemetery crews to go in and take care of what has been an overgrown this whole, this whole season, this whole summer. And this whole, 2012, as a matter of fact, has been a year where they, there was actually no funds from the Historical Society available to take care of the cemetery and the municipalities were very strapped for funds too. So I want to thank everybody that worked on this and I think it's a very important asset to the town. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some correspondence to be received and filed through September 2012 GE helicopter report. Town Planning Board Meeting Minutes dated August 22, 2012 and September 12.
To receive?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other reports resolved the Town Board of the Town of Austin. Everybody accepts the monthly report for September 2012. Following Town Office, Town Clerk's Office Monthly Report, September 2012. Do I have a motion?
移到
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? These are resolutions, we'll move into visitor recognition. Is there anyone who's come to address the board? Andre?
This is the quickest meeting I've ever seen.
Well, we're in budget, so it's, you know.
I have a few questions placed before you. I received a small card that was blue and I misplaced it, so I don't have it with me to hold it up. Did the board create and mail at the taxpayer's expense this card that was received in relation to the elective position for highway supervisor?
Yes.
Thank you. My second question is that the community as a whole, both the village and the town, has been embarrassed by unfortunate news that some students were involved in a brawl of fisticuffs at a sporting event. I saw in the newspapers that the mayor of the village commented on this. And my question to you folks is that has the board taken up a discussion either as, in relation to this problem, apart or with the school board to see what can be done to improve what is going on in our schools? I'm very concerned about schools and that this, this is a difficulty that should never exist, that we should not have our community exposed. So, you know, if you haven't, is it possible that you might consider this in your work meetings to discuss this situation?
Yeah, one of the things that you have to understand is that this is an ongoing police investigation within the Village of Austin. And the second thing is, we're having an intermunicipal meeting. Once a quarter, we have an intermunicipal meeting of the Town of Austin, the Village of Austin, the Austin school system and the libraries and with the police and the rec departments and stuff like that. And that happens to be this Friday. And so it was, it's been put on the agenda to discuss it there. How can we, how can we do this? It is a unfortunate incident that happened. It's been a long rivalry between Sleepy Hollow and Austin. That is not to make any, that is not to justify this thing at all. This should never have happened and, but we want to let the police do their full, you know, their full investigation and their report on this. So the, and the schools are dealing with it too. So we'll have a, we hope, we'll be talking to them on Friday about how we can all work together to hopefully have more. I'm not sure what, you know, but we'll have to see what they come up with, what's discussed or had been discussed in the schools and stuff. Schools are gonna tell us it was outside of the school property, which it was. And so, you know, how do we, how do we handle a situation like that? Especially when you know that the two football teams that were playing that evening have a rivalry anyway, so.
Will there be any public notification about the results of this particular meeting so that?
Well, I'm sure that we, I can, I'll definitely put it in my recap for the, that we'll be working on this Friday anyway. And we'll tell you what's going on. We'll tell you if there's anything new that the schools and/or police have reported back to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question. A rumor has started out in my neighborhood that garbage pickup and trash pickup will be reduced to one day a week and a new contract is coming up. Is that going to be true?
No, what we did was when we, we do have a new contract because we're up for a new contract. So we, when we put the bid document together, we asked the different contractors to bid on one day a week household garbage and the regular two-day-a-week household garbage. And we wanted to see how the prices came back and, because if you really think about it, for the majority, especially of single-family homes, you are collecting a lot more or less household garbage because we're doing such a fabulous job of recycling nowadays. So one of the things we wanted to see is it is a reduction in price that would be passed along directly to the taxpayers. So we got the bids back. What we're going to put into the, what we're going to put into the budget is the two-day-a-week pickup and at our, at our November 8 Town Hall meeting, which is our next Town Hall meeting we'll be having. It's Thursday night at the library, which normally would be on Tuesday night, but because Tuesday night's election night, we're going to have it Thursday, November 8. We will be discussing it with the residents and find out and will give them the price. I don't have the prices right in front of me, but there was approximately a $60,000 difference between one household gar, everything else remaining the same, one household garbage pickup a week versus two household pickup a week. If the residents decide they want to maintain two household pickups a week, we maintain two household pickups a week. There should be no rumors. We've been very out and forward about this, that our bid document did state that and everybody that bid on that bid document bid one day, both, both, two different bids. One with a one-day pickup, one with the regular two-day pickup. So we're putting it in as the two-day pickup in the budget. Should the residents decide as a whole that that's, that's something that they would like to address or talk about it again for next year or not talk about it at all, it is up to, it is their prerogative. So it is not, not something that we're doing or we're going to put in the regular contracts that we've always had. One of the good things about the way we went out to bid though, it came in at a slightly reduced price. It was a reduced price than what we expected it to be. Some communities are having their, their private sanitation companies are going up in price. We had a reduction in price because of the competitiveness of the bid, so that was good too. So we'll have all that information for you. We'll put all of it on the webpage, probably at the beginning of next week since we're trying to get the budget ready for Tuesday. The first initial budget goes out Tuesday. So we'll put the information on the webpage, but we'll discuss it in length on, at the November 8 Town Hall meeting. And if there's not a large enough group there or we haven't heard either way, we'll leave it at two garbage pickups a week and then talk about it during the 2013 year. Is that fair?
That's good to me.
Good, I'm glad.
I have a final question.
Sure.
The community at large is maybe or maybe not creating some kind of plan to develop properties along the Hudson River. It appears that Yonkers, Terrytown and other communities to the south of us have come up with not only plans, but incredibly beautiful developments that have enhanced the look of their community and the fact that their communities are more respected than ever in many ways. And yet I've been living in this town for 10 years and there seems to be nothing that has been done. I go down to the Hudson River and occasionally take a walk because I spend a lot of time outdoors. I see trash along the river. I see old houses that, and buildings that appear to be empty and nothing is done. Is there any discussion going on about this?
Yeah, there's been, there's been plenty of discussion. The one, the key to remember that in the Village and Town of Austin, the entire waterfront except for Lewis Angle Park, which is parkland, okay, is?
Excuse me, could you tell me what you mean by parkland?
It's, it's parkland in perpetuity. It's, it's parkland. You can't, you're not going to build on Lewis Angle Park. That's where the boat house, the Boat and Canoe Club is and then that park that goes over to the, to the Spray Park at the end and everything?
Yes.
That's a park. That's gonna remain a park. Next door to that, that, the rest of that whole property, all the way down the waterfront, you know, as far as you can go in, when you're on that side of the railroad tracks, is privately owned. You have Shattamuck, Shattamuck Yacht Club, you have Westerly Marina, you have, then you have a couple of properties and you have Quimbley Avenue, then you have the, the big brick building and then you have the empty lot, which is the Harbor, Harbor Square, which is the building that's been on and off, on and on, on and off for 10 years. I sat in a Village of Austin work session not too long ago and they said that hopefully by March they'll be, they'll be working again on the Harbor Square property, which is quite a large building on the waterfront. The other properties are looking at different options that they can do for their property. Shattamuck would remain a yacht club, okay? It's, what, what the whole goal was and what the comprehensive plan in the Village of Austin said that that, that piece of, those three and a half acres that are on that side of, it's not very big, would be destination and it has a, except for the Harbor Square building, it has a height restriction of 36 feet, so for mixed use in it, in the different buildings. So there's a waterfront vision committee in the Village of Austin that works constantly down there trying to get stuff to do. There's an economic development manager who's working on things for the downtown area and then down to the waterfront. I know the village is proceeding on their streetscaping project that goes down Main Street. You know how they went down Central Avenue and they made Central Avenue very nice? Well, they're gonna go down Main Street and Seacore. Main Street turns off and then Seacore goes to the train, train station. They're going to be doing that streetscaping down there to connect the waterfront with the downtown. So there's stuff happening. It happens a lot slower than you and I wanted to. It, it would be beautiful if we could put some more restaurants down there and destinations. But again, you have to understand that it's all privately-owned property.
Madam Supervisor, may I respond to the question?
Sure.
Mr. Lamar, I have sort of a different point of view on the village. Obviously, we're in the town, there's little we can do down there. But I can tell you, you know, since my three years of being in office, I've been the grand openings down there and I've seen now some shutdown. A lot of businesses, not just one, a couple, restaurants mostly. I have my own reason why I think the village is the way it is. I think the concentration of affordable housing in one area tends to bring about economic development that isn't so developing. You know, my point of view, I think having affordable housing spread out throughout the community, not segregated into one area, is probably a little better, not only for those who use affordable housing to integrate themselves into the community, not segregate them, but also concentrates them into an area where they are people who have little or no disposable income. And therefore, many of the businesses in that area, immediate area, are not going to do as well, will close up like we've seen because the people living in the immediate area have little or no disposable income. But really for the town, our downtown really is North State Road.
Right.
And what we've been doing as a board, we've, and I don't know if you've been down there yet. We have, we have these banners up, there are businesses opening there. That's where I'm really focusing much of my attention. The police station's for sale. I would love to see it, we've discussed it before, I'd love to see it become a bank. You know, it's a secure building that could be a bank. We don't have a bank, obviously, on North State Road, as you know. There are restaurants doing okay on North State Road. So I think in a sense of the town, I think we've done a decent job in helping North State Road come along, at least since my three years I've been on this board. I've seen North State Road develop for the better. Now, I can't say the same for, for the Village of Austin. But again, our ability to legislate and, I wouldn't even want to say improve the economy down there because I don't think that's the government's job to do that, but is limited in the Village of Austin. But in the town, we've done what we've can. We've partnered with the chamber and the local businesses and I think, uh, that relationship's grown. We have a festival on North State Road this weekend where a lot of local businesses will be there selling their merchandise. So I think we've, we've done quite well in that, in that regard. But again, for the Village of Austin, I've, I've stated my reasons and my beliefs as to why it is the way it is.
Well, you actually, uh, touched on one of the things that I tried to emphasize, the fact that along the Hudson River, the communities such as Terrytown and Yonkers, uh, have built, uh, beautiful affordable housing of, uh, rental places up to 1.3 million dollars. That's the kind of affordable place that I was thinking of, uh, to make our area, have a broader and more expansive, uh, tax base, uh, especially if, uh, these elections go the way they seem to be headed nationally. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'd just like to emphasize that they, if, uh, if you look at the whole picture, there is a, a very fair market value buildings going up. The Avalon, if you're familiar with that, uh, developer is building right, um, by across the street from 7-Eleven. So there, there is a big complex going up there. There is some things happening. We wish there was more. We wish we, the waterfront was more destination where we, people would come in, spend their, spend their dollars and, uh, and be part of this community too. So we'll all work on it together, but we are very proud of some of the stuff that's going on on North State Road, so. Fernando Gonzalez.
Say that these people were, uh, this lady was from Newburgh?
No, Greenberg. No, for, uh, our, our assessor, our new assessor who started in here at the end of February, beginning of March, used to be the assessor up in Newburgh, yes.
I was there recently and boy, do they have a beautiful waterfront area that has been developed. And the restaurants are good.
They, they have a fabulous, they have fabulous restaurants up there, yes, they do.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Anyone else who would like to address the board? Want I then ask for a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Well, thank you for coming tonight and again, we want to congratulate our assessor, Fernando Gonzalez, on getting his I A O. I want to make sure I have the letters right. And I want to thank everybody and have a great week. It's beautiful weather outside, but remember sooner than later, it gets dark earlier and it's going to get colder, so start preparing for the winter. But we hope to see everybody down on North State Road and Chappaqua Road this Saturday at the Harvest Festival and, uh, and, uh, so, uh, have a wonderful weekend. We'll see you soon. Thank you very much.